Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the La Cuan City Council meeting for May 20 of 2024. We begin usually at 6:30 with the caucus, and that's an opportunity, as we've said each meeting, for the council members to have an opportunity to review and discuss amongst ourselves and ask any questions regarding each of the individual agenda items. This evening, however, we do have some special guests I'd like to introduce. We have Ben Clark and John Alessi, both attorneys from our, the city of La Cuan is bonding law firm, Hudson Russ. They're here this evening, and as most of the public knows, the city of La Cuan is attempting to renew and relocate and reestablish the old Knights Columbus building on South Park as the new city hall. And to that end, we will be floating a bond in order to pay those costs. And Ben and John, welcome. Thank you for being here and taking time out to be here. Could you briefly, and for the public's consumption, give us a quick overview of what your intentions are and how we're proceeding with the city of La Cuan and the bonding issue?
Good evening, Council President and members of the council and the public. My name is John Alessi, and as a partner of the law firm of Hudson Russ, we have the good fortune of working with the city and for their upcoming capital project, hopefully. And the capital project, we do the legal work for the city, and it starts with the preparation of a bond resolution. This bond resolution is the cornerstone for the capital project. Sorry, I'm getting my fact here. Cornerstone for the capital project. It authorizes issuance of obligations, bonds, notes, or other obligations that the city can issue for the financing of the capital project. The capital project is put together by the project team, and that sort of scope of the project will be considered by the board. And if the board approves it, then it will go into effect immediately. And the bond resolution, in its current form, authorizes the issuance of up to $14.5 million. And the city does not have to borrow all of that money, but that is the maximum amount at this time. The bond resolution authorizes the issuance of those obligations. And so those obligations may not be issued right away, but it does authorize the issuance of the obligations and ultimately the long-term financing for the capital project.
And John, is it fair to say that the city could take those, that borrowing in phases as destruction progresses, so the city's not saddled with taking amongst them and paying the interest on that all at once?
Excellent point, and that is exactly the case. The measured borrowings is what we always recommend, and the city's financial advisor also recommends that, and it's phasing the project and not borrowing too much money too soon. So not paying interest on money that you're not going to need. So based upon the cash flow as presented by the project team, the measured borrowings, and not paying money on interest you don't need, so.
And you mentioned the figure of approximately $14 million. That would be for refurbishing the new site. There's an additional sum and an additional amount that, is my understanding, will be bonded, and that would be for the demolition of the front portion of city halls that currently exists, and then ultimate remediation of the original site of the city hall. Is that correct?
That's my understanding as well, and that would be done at a later time when that situation is ripe for the authorization. So this is for the, what has been considered Phase One and Phase Two, which is the site work and the construction of, reconstruction of the new city hall.
Thank you, John. Any council members have any questions of John or Ben on this matter?
I have a few.
Go ahead.
After the bonding, if the interest rates go down, like say four or five years from now, you know, we refinance the loan, you know?
Absolutely. It's in many ways like the financing of your house. And so, yes, the terms of the financing will be locked in once that long-term financing is established, and the ability to refinance that is based upon market conditions. And so oftentimes, that is at eight or nine years out, so perhaps five years might be a little too soon to refinance, but that's based upon the market conditions at the time of the sale. And absolutely, that's something that's a refinancing or refunding, it's called.
Say if one of us hits the lot, or the big one, we want to donate $5 million or something.
All right.
Can we pay down the principal early? Do you know, like a home loan, or is that?
You could buy one of the bonds, can't you?
You could absolutely buy one of the bonds. And so the terms of the financing, that the ability to pay it off early is based upon at the time of the sale or issuance. There may be opportunities to set that money aside, make a donation of some form, and to set that money aside so that it can be used to pay off the bonds. But the bondholders want to know that they have those obligations out there locked in for a certain period of time.
Okay, you answered it. Thank you. Good question. No.
Any other questions, council members? Our city attorney, anything you'd like to add at this point, or have Ben or John expounded?
No, they've covered it, and thank you very much. Nothing else, Dan.
John and Ben, thank you for taking the time to come to see us.
It's a pleasure, and we're here to answer any questions at any time.
And we'll be in touch then.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Returning to the caucus and the issue of the agenda items, the first several, including departmental reports, are administrative, so we'll deal with those at the formal meeting. We'll move on to communications from the mayor. Agenda item number three, Mayor Allison's communication to the council advising them, the city assessor is discharged for duties, from her duties for acts of upcoming of a city officer. That is for informational purposes and is usually to receive and file. I don't believe there have been any comments from the council on that, correct?
No, but if possible, can we go into executive sessions to get a full report as to any developments that we are not ready to?
I don't see the need for that. We could take a vote on it if you cared to for an executive session, but that doesn't affect today's city business, does it?
It doesn't, but given the Robert's rules that we can't convene and speak amongst ourselves without jeopardizing the integrity of the forum, I don't know another time that we'd all be in the same room and given the right to speak on this or to discuss this.
Well, since hiring and firing is the sole jurisdiction of the mayor, how would we have any input?
Not necessarily input, but to be brought up to date as to what transpired or to-
In what I'm on with you?
With the city attorney.
Start then anytime, right, John?
Well, we could take a vote if that's what you want to make a motion for.
Sure, would that be done at the regular meeting?
Anyone else on item number three? Moving on to communications from the district department heads, item number four from our city attorney, request the council approve the ordinance transferring funds in the amount of $200,000. That is from an existing account for software maintenance. It's my understanding, and I'm directing this comment to our city attorney, John Gunn, it's my understanding that that money's going to be set aside for the current accounting firm that's doing the controller's duties. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And my only question then is the monies that were allocated for the controller's salary, will that just be held in abeyance, or is that being used elsewhere?
That will be held in abeyance right now. This $200,000 is coming, exactly what you said, from a former software maintenance account where it's, that software wasn't purchased and no additional software at that, at this time is being considered. So therefore, that's where that money, I don't know if the assistant controller wants to add anything to what I just said, or is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone have any questions?
So that money's already in the budget, so we're just transferring it. We're not taking any money out of the general fund.
Correct.
Moving on to item number five again, from our city attorney, request city council approve the ordinance regarding no parking on Furman Boulevard. I'm going to call on Chuck Clark, who I know has done a yeoman's job on this particular topic together with John Gunn from our law department. Chuck, why don't you give us a quick overview of this and what generated this legislation?
Certainly. So in my role as development, I am the key contact for not only the redevelopment of the Bethlehem Steel site, which is known as Renaissance Commerce Park, but also the folks that run the Port of Buffalo. And in your packets, there is a one-page color handout where you see a number of pictures of truck vehicles parked at all hours of the day, in particular, the nighttime. And the concern that was expressed to me from both the Renaissance Commerce Park team and the Port of Buffalo was that this was a hazard in a number of ways, everything from accessibility to the sites. I'll say questionable activity going on in the later hours of the evening. And as Dan Gurken from the DPW can attest to, those truck stops were also litter points, significant litter points, not just with litter, but of other materials that no human being would want to pick up and deal with. Essentially, that section of the roadway from the tip of Ridge Road and Furman Boulevard north to the Buffalo City Line was being used as a truck stop. And so the concern was there was no enforcement capabilities, and it was a safety hazard for the people. There's well over 400 people that work in the Port of Buffalo in different operations, and very soon, the Commerce Park is going to extend north to an entryway at Ridge Road to further market that property. So all in, there was an ask of the development community to make something that we could enforce, that area of no parking. And in addition, I did receive probably half a dozen calls from different community members who also witnessed the same things that I've articulated. So what's before you is an ordinance to ban truck parking altogether and to limit the parking of regular passenger vehicles to particular times of the day.
And that'll be police enforced?
That'll be police enforced, and that is our roadway, because everybody's under the impression, you know, myself included, until I was educated, that Route 5 is a state highway all the way through, but you'll see in your colored packet, there are maps from the interactive DOT website that pinpoints that section of the roadway again from where Ridge Road meets Furman Boulevard before, I'm sorry, Route 5 before it starts going south, north into the city of Buffalo. That is the La Cuanas jurisdiction. We do have the full support of Erie County. We do have the full support of the Port of Buffalo, and in fact, Erie County has donated for our use, an illuminated sign to further promote, you know, no parking for a period of time, because this will be a change. This has been, this is not a new phenomenon. This has been growing for at least the last year, year and a half, if not longer. So that's pretty much the gist of it. It's a combination of public safety, development, and community image.
Thank you, Chuck. Senior foreman Gurken, do you have anything you want to add on that?
Yeah, the only thing I want to add is, like Chuck said, with all the littering, the DPW has to go there and clean it up, and it's also an issue in the winter when we're plowing. It's hard for the snow, for the plows to turn there, and the DPW will install all signage, all permanent signage.
Thank you. And your city attorney, John, anything you want to add?
The only thing I would add to the littering was there was reports of maintenance of vehicles down there, which included changing the oil and also emptying the air brakes. So that's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, many times going down there, I see that the New York State Police are down there inspecting, having all the semis get off, and they expect to, have they to do that? Have they talked, seeing that's our property? Have they come to us to let us know that that's what they're going to do?
Nobody from New York State Police has talked to the city, nor have we talked to New York State Police, but the weigh-in station is actually on the opposite side of the street and doesn't interfere with what the anticipated no-parking rule would be. When they have their weigh station once a month or a couple times per month, it won't interfere as the truck or two that they pull over are literally in relation to the weigh station, and our parking or standing for a prolonged period of time.
Thank you. Any of the council members have any questions on item number five? Not, and we'll move on to item number six again from our city attorney. Request city council approve ordinance limiting chapter 194, the streets and sidewalks. Chuck, were you involved in this?
Your honor, I can explain.
No, I was not.
John, you've got the floor.
Thank you. This was from March 2022, where this council approved and passed that the insurance required or the bond amount for bonding of concrete go up. There, the law department failed to provide you with the requisite ordinance or updated ordinance. So the council already approved this. What's before the council today is to approve the ordinance that mirrors what was approved in March of 2022.
Thank you. Any council members have any questions on that item number six? Moving on to item number 17, your foreman Gurken requested council approve Clark, Patterson, and Lee as project coordinator for the new city hall project. Total cost of $194,290. Proposal letter, proposal letter for project coordination service is attached. I'm requesting that council consider tabling this at this time. It may be a little early. I did have some questions on the original proposal as to what exclusions were covered and why, and that was addressed, thankfully, by our city attorney, but I still have some questions on that. But do any of the council members have any questions on item number seven?
So we're on the table.
I'm considering moving on to that. Okay, moving to item number eight again, from senior foreman Gurken, request city council approve installation of temporary speed bumps into the city of children's play areas throughout the city. These will be installed and moved seasonally made through October locations where the speed bumps were attached. Senior foreman Gurken, anything you want to add before we ask any questions or ask any questions?
Yeah, it's my understanding that the previous commissioner, Mr. DeSantis, was already working with the city council on temporary speed bumps. And with all the new playground equipment being installed throughout the city and the new basketball courts, I think this is the perfect opportunity to do it, especially with the kids getting out of school. Getting for the summer.
I think the speed bumps were welcome addition to the Odell location, which helps solve the speeding problems and the individuals not stopping at stop signs at that location. So it might be a wise extension of that whole concept. Thank you. Any of the council members have any comments or questions on that item?
Yes, it's council president.
Councilman Mayor, Cleveland Avenue, is it just on Cleveland or on Electric?
As of right now, it's just on Cleveland. Electric is considered a secondary street, so it's considered like an emergency evacuation. Plus, you have the two, the stop sign right there at Electric Cleveland.
I live on Cleveland, and I, they don't stop at that stop sign. I'd rather have it on Electric.
I'm sure we can take that into consideration, sure.
Thank you, thank you, sir, for putting this together, because this has been a long discussion amongst us on the council, as well as residents that have been very vocal about the safety of the children at play, and then just us trying to figure out how the process goes and responsibilities and liabilities and all of these things. I know they're referred to as traffic calming devices versus, versus speed bumps or humps. The semantics of it all is very exhausting, but very welcome, so I appreciate it. And I know as far as the Odell playground, they were, they were installed and removed by LMHA, and now I'm proud to announce that the mayor has decided to actually, with the paving of Walnut Street, to implement the permanent ones. And that would be the ideal model follow when streets are rebuilt and paved that are around playgrounds, so that would alleviate the installation and removal every season. So that's amazing. Thank you guys so much for putting this all together.
Sure, and then permanent speed bumps will be paved in tomorrow.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else on item number eight? Okay, moving on to item number nine, from the city clerk, request city council approve request to hire two bingo, new bingo inspectors. Effective immediately, inspectors are paid on a per diem basis $100 per inspection, not to exceed 16 inspections per year. Money has been budgeted for that, for those expenditures. Any council members have any questions on item number nine? Grace, do you have anything on item number nine?
Yep.
Moving on to item number 10, from our chief, he requests city council approve the ordinance transfer $15,000 from fire department budget code, quote, training schools, unquote, capital budget code, quote, training tower, unquote, for the installation of fence along North Steel Wanda to secure this property. Any council members have any questions on item number 10? Director Maroc, what you have anything you want to share with us on that?
The training never came to fruition, so he wants to, Chief Fino wants to get some fencing around the training area, and that's why he's moving animal bodies around.
And where the city boundary line there, so they're-
Yes.
When it's installed, installed it'll be installed properly. Okay. Any council members again, anything on item number 10? Moving on to item number 11, director of government marketing, public information, request city council approve the resolution regarding rezoning of 264 Ridge Road and the adjacent Bay Pond. Recall, we had a public hearing on this and discussion last meeting. Any questions on item number 11? Moving on to communications from citizens, we will take these up at the next, at the formal meeting, items number 12 and 13. And then, under waiver of the rules, there have been several, I requested that, we'll get to that, city attorney requests that we approve the bond resolution, but I believe that with appointing CPL as the engineering oversight entity, I'm asking that the council consider tabling this also for further consideration and further information. Any council members have any questions on that? Again, city attorney requests city council approve a second extension for sufficient proposed budget, and gives the explanation regarding resignation of controller and bringing the accounting firm up to speed, just taking a little additional time. So there's a second extension of one week being requested. Close of business on May 24, 2024 for the mayor proposal council, I'm sorry, your budget. Any council members have any questions on that item? And then moving on to, again, senior foreman Gurken requests city council approve Clark, Patterson, and Lee, along with the other item that was part of the regular agenda. What we can do is, if we waive the rules, these two items don't even have to be part of those necessarily, unless the council wants to take all three items up under the waiver of the rules. We can do that at the time that the motion occurs for a request for the waiver of the rules. In the meantime, any council members have any comments on the CPL modification and a request from senior foreman Gurken? We can discuss it at any time. If not, I request the table items from the last meeting we carried in libraries, request for outdoor entertainment. I'm going to ask that that be brought off the table. Any council members have any questions on that issue? If not, then I'm going to formally open the meeting for council agenda, May 20, 2024, with a flag.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Thank you, please be seated. Mr. City Clerk, you take the role.
McLaughlin, present. Anderson.
Here.
Ready.
Here.
Serta.
Right.
Ranor.
Here.
Law Department.
Here.
Development Marketing.
Here.
Public Works.
Here.
Public Safety.
Here.
Assistant Controller.
Here.
And Recreation.
Here.
Again, I would caution anyone present that the meeting is being recorded. Thank you. And again, any public speaker would be requested to address the agenda items only. Our first individual is Laverne Ware. Is Laverne, would you come forward, please, and you can address us from the podium?
Good evening. My name is Laverne Ware. I'm a 13th street policy theorist. The problem is, and I know it's a household and some have two to three cars, you know, their children are still living there, and we have alternate parking. And the way the Baker Homes is set up, it would be so easy, this is just a suggestion, to make every other street one way, because you have two main streets. You have Still Wanda, and you have Wanda, so you can enter either way. But see, I came here a couple of years back, and they said it has to be alternate parking because the fire truck ain't there, you wouldn't be able to get through. But because there's so many cars now, and they're SUV, some of them take up almost one and a half parking space, so it's limited when you have two to three automobiles in one house, okay? Then you have a lot of seniors there. There's no, they have to park like sometime on the other street in order to get in, so I'm just suggesting that they can do a study, just do every other street, like Wilson, and stop, right, you know, just one come down, because when you have two streets that you can enter from either side for emergency vehicles, it's not impossible to do. And I believe it will solve a lot of problems as well, you know?
And Laverne, thank you for that suggestion. That suggestion had come up a little while back, and thank you for bringing it to our attention again. Director Maroc, this is something that really needs to be looked at. When you're given the fact that the first ward has such narrow streets to begin with, maybe something to-
Yeah. Look further into it.
Would you look further into it, and maybe if the city has to consider perhaps a formal study to see if that's a feasible alternative-
Yes.
-to what exists now? Because it's not only, in the summertime, it's one thing, I mean, in the wintertime, when there's snow and plowing, it's even a worse problem.
Yes.
And that's come to our attention a few times. Ms. Laverne, thank you again for your suggestion, and thank you for coming here. Is we on Bobbitt? Is Keanu Bobbitt?
Hi, I'm Keanu Bobbitt and everybody at 26 Wilson Street. There's a big pothole right across the street from my house going into the Baker Homes. What is that, Oldland Lane? Right when you're coming off, when it's on Wilson, you making a right. So Oldland Lane is a big pothole. I have a picture of it too.
Is it by the store?
Um, no, it's closer going up towards Stillwana. But I live at 26 is right in that one way across from 26 Wilson Street in the one way. That's Oldland Lane. Is there any way to fix it, fix the pothole? Is it okay?
You could show it to me if you want to come forward. Dan, are you familiar with this problem?
No, I'm not, but I'll make sure it gets taken care of tomorrow. Oh, okay. Oh, right in the one way.
Yeah, right in the one way. And I live right across the street in the Baker Homes.
Got it.
You want to see it? Oh, thank you.
My mother, her name was Barbara Peoples.
Oh, I remember Barbara. Ms. Barbara is a goddess, yeah.
We miss.
Thank you. Thank you for mentioning it. Sharon Robinson?
My name is Sharon Robinson. I live on 152 Franklin Street. My son is Andrea Herron. He's the one who passed away at the canal. And I've been trying to get everybody together to have programs for kids. The reason due to he died was there's no swimming pool. Like when it's a hot day, where do our kids go to? Sometime parents are working. They don't have a center to go anywhere. Everybody kept saying that they could go to Lackawanna High School. My grandkids are six years old. They can't go to the, you know, to the, they don't, they're still not going to the high school. So I'm trying to see if we could have a center for these kids. These kids are roaming around the streets. They don't have nowhere to go to. And it seems like we're the only city that don't have nothing for our kids. I mean, maybe I don't because this is new to me and I'm starting. And maybe I'm ignorant and don't know the program and y'all could educate me. But I really think that we need more programs for our kids. Just like that splash supposedly supposed to be built on Center Street. I didn't even know about it till the other day ago I passed by it. I'm like, whoa, I didn't even know about that. But this is why I'm here, for my son and for the kids for Lackawanna because we don't have nothing. The other day ago, it was raining outside. Now to bring it up, from your house, we used to take our kids to play basketball. We don't have more things. And that's why our kids are getting more and more into trouble. And this is why I'm here for the kids.
Thank you.
And thank you for hearing me out.
And we do have this splash pads. Chuck, do you have any update on the?
July 1st.
Oh, that's the opening?
July 1st, it's going to open. And we are on track for that to happen.
What's the need just today? Like, all ages?
All ages.
I can, I'm going in.
Thank you.
Thanks for the heads up there, Andrea. No problem with that.
I don't know if you're planning on sticking around after the meeting, but I'm the director of recreation, Brian Lack, so I'd like to talk to you about the city swim project that we do have. It is at the high school. That is the only pool that's available for members of the public. But it's a terrific program. We've had it for a few years. It's specifically designed for just the purpose that you illustrated. You've got kids in the first ward that they don't have access to pools. You know, their parents don't have money to put a pool in the backyard or may not even have a backyard.
Yeah, like me, I don't have a yard where I live.
Correct. That's the entire motivation that the city swim project had in putting the program together was specifically for kids who don't have, or whose families don't have the economic means, who don't have the transportation means. Transportation, I shouldn't say that because that is still a little bit of a stumbling block. But they do have a program. It's terrific. They're, I don't know when they're going to start the next session, but I think that that's something, if that's, you're interested in, and it's instructional. It's, I've never swum in my life up to, I'm going to college on a scholarship. They have all levels. And it seems like what you're looking for and what their focus and what their mission statement is, it fit like a glove. So I'd like to speak with you about it if you'd like to.
Okay, thank you.
The great part about that is that it doesn't matter what the weather is outside, the program still holds on. So we are not trapped to just a small time where an outdoor pool would only be, you know, be confined to that short period of time, you know, summertime. But with the program that Brian mentioned, it does run in weather. It's not good out, so.
That's, I didn't even know about it.
Yeah, there's a lot.
Right, is that a year round?
It's not year round.
It's generally, they run a concurrent with the school year. But scheduling has kind of been knocked askew over the last few years. It was supposed to start much earlier and was put off due to COVID. And it's a grant funded program. We get monies from the Ralph Wilson Foundation. So we're kind of beholden to the grant cycle. The council was nice enough to allocate some money to bridge the gap between the gaps in the grant cycle. But our main limiting block now is there's a dearth of lifeguards in the area. They're trying to set up a Red Cross training program and get new lifeguards trained. That's what's holding up the next session. If I had to guess, I haven't gotten any response in the last week or so from Coach Mike, who runs the program, I would be led to believe that it will, the new session will commence at the start of the new school year. That's where we're at now. But it's subject to change.
If I may?
Yes.
Also, New York State has put a lot of money in this budget, Swim New York. There's a lot of money. They want to train everybody to swim.
Yeah, what the shortage is, lifeguard right now.
Yeah, yeah, but there might be money available. There also come down the road. I'm assuming that.
That's a good idea.
Also, she brings to my attention that we're supposed to have it on the other side of Ridge Tombstone radius. And we would like to know what happened to that program or the splash pad and the pool.
When that, excuse me, when it occurred with her son and the young lady, it was a, they did a survey. And it was supposedly a swimming pool slash pad within a two mile radius from the canal. And it was, it didn't happen because it couldn't put it over someone, the plane or, see, if you can't come over here in the second ward, we're going to shut it down. So why did they shut it down? Well, the monies would be available if it would have been paid for. But they shut it down because it wouldn't come across the bridge.
I'm not familiar with that program at all.
I have no familiarity with that either.
Canal is not within the jurisdiction of Stillwana.
No, no.
That canal is in the jurisdiction of the city of Butler. But I don't believe the city was ever notified of that particular program to have a splash pad or pool or whatever in the city of Lackawanna. Now, the original splash pad that's going to be on Franklin was originally proposed for Ridge Road as memorial field site. But because that was an ancient burial ground, you can't put anything there really. So the site was moved to Franklin. But the program that you mentioned, I have never heard of. I don't know of any. But it didn't affect Lackawanna. Yeah.
One more point, if I may, Mr. President. As the city attorney pointed out, I know this doesn't exactly fit what you were saying regarding indoor basketball. That's something that maybe we could discuss with the high school as well because we used to have open gyms there. We have been trying to update all of our playgrounds. Four new basketball courts throughout the city, a new soccer complex at Victory Playground. They are vandalized before they're even open. We're facing a citywide problem. We have that new soccer complex that was donated by US Soccer. It's $100,000 structure, brand new painting on the court itself. It took three days before some kids that we'd never identified took a piece of rebar out of the ground on the playground and hacked the paint off of it. We've had the basketball court at Franklin Playground that was just put in with glass backboards. Glass backboards were shattered twice.
Sorry.
Yeah, I understand. So we're trying to introduce new things and we're being met by a good amount, more than a lack of appreciation from, and I can't blame this on everybody, obviously. But we've got people that are ruining these things the second that we put them up. So it's an uphill battle. Just know that we are trying.
All right. Thank you. Good luck. Thank you, Sharon. Thank you. Next up, we have our former council member Andrea Haxton. Andrea, you were the first female council member, weren't you?
Yeah, I was.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I won my seven votes. So that shows.
Welcome back.
Every vote counts. Thank you. Well, I haven't gone away. I sporadically show up, just like, you know, you never know. First thing I want to say, I said years ago with the orange tree out front, when things are finally moving, I'm real happy to see all of that action. And I said, if you let every citizen a buck or five bucks, let them take a whack at it, like you can get the money.
It's only going to take one whack.
But just let the citizens, they'll bring that down real fast. So the second thing is that I talked to a mayor about this. Hopefully that you guys can look into getting the traffic and safety study over at St. Hyacinth's with the head start because finally the crossing guard there now, this first year we ever had a crossing guard there. And she's got a stop sign panel thing, thank God. When it starts out, she needs a light up one. So does Teresa, so do all our crossing guards are a light up. Like I used to work at the Mills games, the sheriffs have some kind of line they do or something. But the babies, you should see how busy it is. Go sit down there and watch them moms and dads. And you know how toddlers, there's three, four, two-year-olds going in there. They'll run, you know, run away from you faster than you could rip back, you know, hit them again. So think about doing a traffic and safety study there at the St. Hyacinth's for a crosswalk, a caution light. All of the above, okay? It's dangerous. In the trucks, it's dangerous. Next thing, Mr. Sanders and Mr. Glenn at Chavira have their annual high school reunion going. And they're selling tickets. They're only $10. It's July 27. Everybody's welcome. You could buy a ticket if you can't make it that day. It's hard to sell another one back. But please look into supporting Lackawanna Educational Extracurricular Education Foundation for all high school class reunion. Okay, next, how about someday we come up at the library real bad, a light up sign to say what's happening in our city? Don't you find communication is a biggie? And that's one of our things, like Dan and her, this, that. We need some light up signs. The school's got the Mark Road one and the high school's got that, the middle school. Anyway, it costs a lot, I know, but something to think about. Next.
Wouldn't that affect the integrity of the?
Oh, historical building? We've talked about it. We've talked about that. So, yeah, we're still talking.
You know, what we need is newspapers so that we circulate those kinds of things.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I totally agree. So that would be nice. Why can't the Hamburg Center, the Senate of B take us on? Next, I wanted to ask, people are telling me yes and no. Do we have grant writers on staff or are they per diem or what is that?
We have a grant writer.
On staff?
Chuck, do you want to sound on that?
There's an individual, his name is Bernie Rotella. Came to us through CPL. He is a grant writing consultant that is with us on a monthly basis.
Okay, so he just will write grants and take a percentage of whatever.
I can't speak to how he gets paid.
He's not a salary though.
He's not a city employee, but he does address grant needs across the whole spectrum. So development, recreation.
Library?
Well, the library.
City-owned building?
Yeah, well, that would be, well, I'm not objecting. I'm just, I'm thinking to answer your question. It would be part of any facilities type grants that he goes after.
Keep it in, keep it in, Matt. Friendship House property, I see a rezon in it and nice spot for a community center. Incorporate all sorts of nice things in there. There's plenty of parking and we did all, we need it all badly. You know we do.
Well, the first ward needs a shopping center first.
Everything.
Roastery.
But they said they wouldn't come with that other study from LCDC because it wasn't enough people or something. What was it, Johnny?
Well, the mayor is looking, is trying hard to get a market in on that, at that location is all I can tell you.
Oh, is that what?
Whether or not demographics are sufficient to bring a big name Furman or not, I don't know.
Okay, but we really do need a place to get the kids off the street year round, you know, year round. I hear housing's putting in a splash pad?
We're not housing.
No, but they have to come before planning, zoning and blah, blah, blah.
We're not planning or zoning either, so.
Well, did you hear anything about it?
No, nothing.
Oh, all right. You just did. Okay, thank you all. I think you're, I'm really proud of you that you're moving our city along. I really like to see it, you know. Chuck, Chuck, just keep going. A little engine if you could. I think I can, I think I can. And we can for our kids. And boy, do they deserve it and their kids.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Another former council member, John Kwajnaski, second ward at the time.
Oh, gosh, we're all here.
Number 10 with that fence that goes along the Stillwana. There's going to be openings in there. So we use that for stone for the wintertime when we pile all the stone. They're already going to have good sized gates in there that they can get in with them big trucks.
Yes, there is a plan for a gate right near the opening where we get in with the trucks at first, no, and fire trucks.
Yeah, there's a little gate for the fire trucks.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and on the Franklin Playground, where the splash pad is, they're putting the parking lot where the basketball court was. There's a dead tree right in the corner of the fence. And one's been fallen off there already for about years. You see if you can get that cut down and get it out of there.
In what area?
Right in the corner where the parking lot is, the old basketball court.
Oh, yes, sir. It's already scheduled.
We're down at Woodlett.
It's already scheduled to be cut down. It's coming down before the parking lot goes in.
Okay. And on my house, when they did the sewers on my, on that street, Center Street, there's a freezer, a cat like, where they put the sewers in.
A bubbler, sir.
Yeah, it just has, just has this square notch on top. You could put a wrench on it or off. Well, it's supposed to be like that. It's supposed to be an indentation where the, like a ratchet goes down inside of the hole. So the lawnmowers don't break the blade when they hit it.
A water cap, sir?
It's the sewer pad.
Okay. What's your address, sir?
270 Center Street. And you were supposed to change it. The guy who was putting that one in, he said, I'll tell his boss he's supposed to change it. You know, never got chased.
I'll make sure it gets changed for you.
Thank you.
All right, Jack, thank you. All right. City clerk?
Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 6, 2024.
Random minutes of dot minutes of the regular meeting of May 6, 2024.
Muhlahe seconds. Motion by Moreno, second by Muhlahe to adopt minutes of the regular meeting of May 6, 2024. Muhlahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdick?
Yeah.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carrie 5-0. Departmental reports one and two.
Random moves to receive and file departmental reports one and two inclusive. Moreno seconds.
Motion by Moreno, second by Moretti to receive and file departmental reports one and two inclusive. Muhlahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdick?
Moreno?
Yes.
Carrie 5-0. Communications from the mayor. Mayor Ifall submits a communication to the council advising them the city assessor was discharged from her duties for actions unbecoming of a city officer.
Muhlahe needs to receive and file.
Moreno seconds.
Motion by Muhlahe, second by Moreno to receive and file.
Muhlahe? Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdick?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carrie 5-0. City attorney requests the city council approve the ordinance transferring funds in the amount of $200,000.
Random moves to receive and file act on ordinance.
Second, sir, right.
Motion by Moreno, second by Sirdick to adopt ordinance as written. Muhlahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdick?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carrie 5-0. And ordinance amending the 2023, 2024 budget ordinances to accommodate a general fund transfer of $200,000 from budget code software maintenance to budget code consulting.
Random moves with that ordinance is written?
Second, sir, right.
Motion by Moreno, second by Sirdick to adopt ordinance as written. Muhlahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdick?
Moreno? Yes.
Carrie 5-0. City attorney requests city council approve the ordinance regarding no parking on Furman Boulevard. Boulevard.
Random moves to receive and file Act on Ordinance, with the thanks to our, uh, Chuck Clark, uh, from Development, and our Law Department, John Gawn, for a very quick response to this, uh, newly developing problem. Anderson seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to receive and file Act on Ordinance, with thanks to Chuck Clark of Development, and the Law Department, John Gawn, for your quick response to this issue. Mahlahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carrie five zero. An ordinance amending Chapter 215 Traffic and Vehicles of the Municipal Code. The ordinance designates no parking on the east and west sides of Furman Boulevard from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM, and no tractor-trailer commercial vehicle parking allowed.
Random moves to adopt ordinance is written?
Anderson second.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to adopt ordinance as written. Mahlahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carrie five zero. City attorney requests the city council approve the ordinance amending Chapter 194 Opening Streets and Sidewalks.
Mahlahe moves to receive and file Act on Ordinance.
Anderson second.
Motion by Mahlahe, second by Anderson, to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Mahlahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carrie five zero. An ordinance amending Chapter 194 Opening Streets and Sidewalks. The Lackawanna Municipal Code rescines City Code Chapter 194-29 bond, insurance required, and replaces it with Section 194-29 bond, insurance required as follows. Before any permit to open a street, sidewalk, or alley is granted by the Department of Public Works, the applicant will provide a performance bond in the sum of 10% of the project cost, with a minimum cost of $5,000, and proof of liability insurance coverage as established by the council.
Mahlahe moves to adopt ordinance as written?
Anderson seconds.
Motion by Mahlahe, second by Anderson, to adopt ordinance as written. Mahlahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carrie five zero. Senior Foreman Public Works requests the city council approve Clark Patterson Lee, CPL, as project coordinator for the new city hall project. Total cost is $194,290. Proposal note of project coordination services is attached.
Random moves to, uh, table this item, uh, together with the request for waiver of the rules for an updated proposal, uh, that's to come up, to come later in the meeting.
Second, sir.
Motion by Morano, second by Sirdike, to table request, together with the request of, uh, waiver of the rules for, sorry, further information. Mahlahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carrie five zero. Senior Foreman Public Works requests the city council approve the installation of temporary speed bumps in the vicinity of children play areas throughout the city. These will be installed and removed seasonal, May through October. Proposals for the speed bumps attached.
Mahlahe moves to approve the request.
Morano seconds.
Motion by Mahlahe, second by Morano, to approve request. Mahlahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carrie five zero. City clerk requests the city council approve the request to hire two new vehicle inspectors, Kelly Beady and Candace Zach, effective immediately. Inspectors are paid on a per diem basis, $100 per inspection, not to exceed 16 inspections per year. The money is in the budget for the 23-24 fiscal year, and has been budgeted for in the upcoming fiscal, fiscal year.
Random moves to approve it.
Moretti second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to approve request. Mahlahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carrie five zero. Fire chief requests the city council approve the ordinance to transfer $15,000 from the fire department budget code training schools to the capital budget code training tower for the installation of a fence along North Steelawana to secure the property.
Random moves to receive and file Act on Ordinance.
Moretti second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Mahlahe?
Yes.
Anderson? Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carrie five zero. An ordinance amending the 23-24 budget ordinances to increase appropriations for the capital project Fire Training Facility 2022 DASME, transferring funds in the amount of $15,000 from budget code Fire Department Training Schools to budget code Fire Training Facility 2022 DASME.
Random moves to adopt ordinance is written?
Moretti second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to adopt ordinance as written. Mahlahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carrie five zero. Director of Development and Marketing and Public Information requests the city council approve the resolution regarding the rezoning of 264 Ridge Road and the adjacent vacant lot.
Random moves to receive and file Act on Ordinance.
Mahlahe seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Mahlahe, to receive and file Act on Resolution. Mahlahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carrie five zero. A resolution amending the zoning classification of 264 Ridge Road, Lackawanna, and the adjacent lot from open space to neighborhood commercial.
Random moves to adopt resolution.
Mahlahe seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Mahlahe, to adopt resolution as written. Mahlahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carrie five zero. John Ingram, chairman of Lackawanna Fund Day, requests the city council approve the use of Lackawanna's portable restrooms for the Lackawanna Community Fund Days event being held in Lackawanna Library on August 23rd and 24th, 2024.
Excuse me, before I talk about Fund Day, I want to address a few things I could've said here. First of all, with the planning board, when we talked about the splash pad, and the splash pad was first, thought out when the mayor first got the vision to do the splash pad, her goal was to do two. We were, we were, they were already established for the, for that one that was supposed to go by the library, couldn't do it. She wanted to do two, but at one time she could not do two. No one, let me say, no one on the planning board has ever said, if it's not in the second ward or something like that, that's bull. If you've ever been to a planning board meeting, or, or any other, or the zoning board meeting, you, we have residents that's on that board from the first ward. That's how rumors get started, that's how things misconstrue. You know, when you, when we talk about meetings, that's why we have those meetings, so citizens can come and listen. There's too much rumors go out that people who have not attended the meeting, will go saying, hey, I heard this, and next thing is believable. Secondly, when we talk about the friendship of the plan, we had a recent meeting talking about open to the public, and it was only one person that showed up there, that was me. You know, and they were talking about doing some things that we've been talking about, was to try to get grocery store, try to get businesses, and make sure that first ward is getting what it's needed. This takes a lot of work, it's a lot of planning and working going in to get this stuff done. And yes, we cannot, where, where, for a grocery store there, to go there right now, you're not gonna get none of the big business right now, because, because of the numbers back in the past. But things have changed. We have a director of development that's working to make things happen. People do not go to meetings, and these meetings been here for years, and then they hear stuff out in the street, and it's gospel. It is not gospel. That's why you have to attend these meetings. You have to, you don't have to come to every one, but you need to hear so you get the real fact, and you can take it back to the community. You know, too, it's too many rumors coming along, and then the rumors are believable. And then the facts are not being believed. Number two, now I'm gonna talk, um, I want to talk about, before I talk about Fund Day, I had a couple of ideas on there. The gas station on Ridge Road, I'm really upset behind that, because that started in 2018. It's 2024. You know? And a gas being pumped with a, every, every, every time we, every, I am tired of seeing businesses coming and saying, or people coming, how they're gonna develop, and they partially do stuff, and then all of a sudden, either they stop, and then I hear a big sign going up. We must start doing something where we can protect where, make sure that some of these stuff come, come into, into this, you know what I'm saying?
Can I interrupt you for a second? Uh, Chuck, before your time, we often discussed the problems with, um, lack of, uh, control over our, our permit issuances and parameters for the issuance of those construction permits. Uh, we need work to be done on that, so this, what we're experiencing with the gas station and the first ward doesn't continue to happen in the future. Furthermore, John is absolutely right, I drive by that often, and, uh, there's, there's no activity there. We, we, we keep getting promised that there's gonna be something, but there's not a, a person working there, there's, there's nothing going on, there's, the convenience store that was supposed to be adjacent to it, there's, there's not even a light turned on. Um, have you had any contact with the owner?
We, we have, um, and, and some of the information that we received is, uh, a lot of the same. Um, just, just quick background, uh, John, you're right, 2018 was when that came before the planning board. Uh, obviously COVID came, disrupted some things, they came back in 2021 with some site plan amendments, the planning board gave them a list of 10 requirements that they had to follow. Fast forward to today, uh, they were in housing court last year to the tune of, uh, $3,600 in violations, um, uh, that are now on their, their, their taxes. They're current, but they're, they're, they were behind in violations. Uh, we did talk to the owner, he has been trying unsuccessfully, uh, for the last couple of years, to get a name owner to come in there and run the store and run the gas. He's failed. He is now in a financial bind where he realizes he needs to open this store on his own. Uh, he has told us that he is targeting, uh, mid-July, uh, to early August for opening that store on his own. The caveat I give to that is that before he even unlocks the door and turns on the lights, the code enforcement folks are gonna go there and check to make sure that every one of the nine conditions that were outlined in the planning board, um, were followed. But he is in a point now where he cannot get what his goal was, which was to have a name operator of both the store and the, and the gas station, and he has given us a target of, of mid-July to early August with opening that up, again, pending that those things are, are, are covered.
And Chuck, has he indicated whether or not he has a gas supplier online?
He has not shared that with us, and certainly that's one of the conditions.
Let me, let me be clear, I'm not mad at gas, I was hoping the gas station, I was hoping the store would be there, but I am tired of seeing people buy property, saying what they're gonna do, and then they don't do it, and just hold the property up where we could, Mr. Clark could get, could bring some other people in. I'm just tired of seeing that happen in our city, especially when it come in Ward One, you know what I'm saying? That's what I, I think that we have to be a little more certain, when people say, oh, we're gonna do this, we're gonna build this right here, and just give us time, but just give us this land right here. I know we want to sell it, but we need to do a little more, do, a little more home from these people that come in. Cause I remember when it first started, I remember when Gemma was walking around, and I was talking to one of the Gemma, I don't know if he was the owner, or he was lying, whatever, and I was like, oh, I got this, I own 10 stores or whatever. I remember that company, I've got this car, you know, and that is what I'm talking about, when we got people that come in here, buying property and just holding it, whatever. We had, I argued about the church on, on Ridge Road, the same thing. We had to make them clean it up, because they were just doing nothing till, till we finally got on them. So it's not about, I don't care if it's food by, but do what you say you're gonna do.
Well, there's, there's a fine line that we have to observe, I'm sure you're aware of it, John, somebody comes in to buy a piece of property, and they intend to do X, Y, and Z with it, and they don't do it, as long as their taxes are up to date, we, we can't force them to, to necessarily open up, and the location that you may have mentioned is part of what you just said, it's one thing to have a business that promised to open and didn't, and another that promised to open and didn't, and is an eyesore, and has a lot of garbage, and uncut grass, and weeds, and so on and so forth.
I'm just saying, we just, I just want to make sure we get whoever's business, and we need to help businesses, we want businesses to come along, we want them to do stuff.
Well, that's why we changed the tax rate.
And, but, just they gotta do, they party, they gotta be for real.
But, but John, I just want you to know, the code enforcement folks are regular visitors to, to that site, um, but to the council president's point, and again, not to be derogatory to, to that site, but to the council president's point, and again, not to be derogatory towards any past decisions when I wasn't involved, there's nothing in any of the documentation that put a timeframe or a restriction on what needed to be done here, so as long as he meets the marginal minimum requirements, he's, he is where he is.
Maybe we might have to change a little.
But we have, in, in terms of new stuff, we have, but going forward, or looking at this project in the past, this one is a tough one.
The traffic, the traffic lighting and more, do we get update, when that's gonna, when that's gonna start?
Council president, if I may?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Ingram, the city received all of the grant funding, the New York State DASME grant, and the Erie County Urban Incentives grant, so the money has been received through the grants. Our engineering firm is in the design phase, which is almost finished, and they're getting ready to put together big documents to go out for construction. That's where we're at right now.
Thank you, that's why we need that late. One more thing before I get to Fund Day, I had a lady came to my house, totally tells council, perfectly thanked Councilman Dean, going to her house and cutting down some trees, whatever, whatever. She said if I didn't say it, she was gonna make sure she'd be a nice man. Now I want to talk about Fund Day. Before I talk about Fund Day, I want to pass this up to.
We, we like a limitation on how lengthy.
It's not gonna be long. I want you to look at those pictures, Fund Day started in 2014. Fund Day this year will be its 10th year. Fund Day provides, we, on Fund Day, we have 40, 40 and 45, 50 health vendors, different type of vendors. And Fund Day was founded because we were not getting information to our residents, whatever. We bring health vendors, we bring job people, we bring people that can help our community. The reason it was called community funding, it was called community funding for the whole community and the whole city of Lackawanna. On that list, when you look there, you'll see everybody that haven't participated, from the city hall, to some of the councilmen here, to, to elected official, to governor, and I've been working with Tim, Tim Kennedy on this for the last 10 years. This is our 10th year where we celebrate a library. We rotated from Baker Home, Municipal Hall, to the library. We did that every year for two reasons. One, we didn't want it to be just one group of individuals doing, we want the whole city to get involved. That's why we go, that's why we rotate from the library to the Baker Home, for the whole thing, and we always have a working farm. This year, we have some major stuff planned, we got some, we're trying to get a special guest to come, you know, for that. We have a lot of activities for the kids, we have, we have activities for the kids, but the main goal is to bring the information for seniors and family members who cannot get those information. I'm at Griffin, where for the library, we'll have the insurance, we'll make sure that we have insurance for them, we ask them for no fundraising, I raise all the fines. I get people to donate, I've been doing it for 10 years. It's not a profit, nobody makes no money, we pay enough money just to make sure everything is done for the rest. Fortunately, we got a great library that's gonna be participating, whatever, and I want everybody to participate, that's all.
Thank you. You do a great job with that, John. In addressing item number 12, right, I move to approve request refer to public works.
Moretti seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to approve request refer to public works. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry five zero.
And item, yeah, and item number 13, Morano moves to receive and file.
Moretti second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry five zero. Request to waive the rules.
Right, I move to waive the rules as pertains to the second and third items only, strike that. Right, I move to waive the rules as pertains, request from the city attorney regarding the bond resolution, and the second from the city attorney requesting an extension of one week for the mayor's proposed budget. My motion is exclusive of the last item from the senior foreman Birkin, which we addressed earlier.
Maflahee seconds, waiting on the rules.
Move by Morano, second by Maflahee, to waive the rules, request, will include the request from the city bond for the city bond resolution and the extension of one week regarding the budget. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry five zero. City attorney requests the city council approve the bond resolution for the city hall capital improvements project in the amount of $14,500,000, bond resolution is attached.
Right, I move to table.
Maflahee seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Maflahee, to table bond resolution. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
You're gonna go with the extension next?
Stretch.
City attorney requests the city council approve a second extension of one week per submission of the proposed budget. With the resignation of the comptroller and the integration of the accounting firm auditing accounts for the current fiscal year, an additional week is required to complete the reconciliation of accounts. The second extension of one week will be the close of business on May 24th, 2024.
Right, I move to approve request.
Maflahee seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Maflahee, to approve request. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Morano?
No, Moretti.
Moretti?
Yes.